I want to thank everyone for their attendance. We will begin with the invocation by the Reverend Sidney L. Davis, St. James Missionary Church, if Reverend Davis would come forward, if everyone would stand for the invocation, and after the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Reverend, we thank you for coming down, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, we pray that you will open our eyes, open your ears, be attentive to the prayers of your servant. We pray for the 11 members of City Council as they make decisions that govern this great city of Virginia Beach. We pray for their safety as they live in the various districts that they live in. We pray for their protection and safe travel. Lord, we pray for Mayor William D. Sessom Jr. as he provides, preside over the various decisions concerning this formal session. We seek your guidance, we seek your direction as council embark upon the business at hand. We pray for every person and group that will stand before council, fill them with the knowledge of your will and all spiritual wisdom and understanding. Thank you for the opportunity to pray for our city, our leaders, our legislators, and all that are in our authority. Lord, help them to seek to please God and not man. Help them to love you and hate evil. Help them to realize that no weapon formed against this great city, the state of Virginia, and our nation will ever prosper. We refuse every tongue that accuses us of evil. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord. In closing, Lord, give all citizens of Virginia Beach and our nation an undivided heart. Put a new spirit in us. Remove from us hearts of stone and give us hearts of flesh so we will follow your decrees and be careful to keep your laws. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend, we thank you again for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session minute?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second for certification of the closed. Any discussion? Call for the question.
By a vote of nine to zero with Mrs. Abbott and Mrs. Kane on family vacations, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to review.
I have a motion for approval, minutes of June 7th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please. Now, it's my pleasure to make some nice presentations, if I could. And this is the TBA Scholarship Foundation, and those from the TBA that will be participating, if they could come forward, please. As they come forward, this is the 52nd year that the Towarder Builders Association Scholarship Foundation has helped high school graduates continue to college. The foundation was created in 1965 when several generous leaders in the building industry decided that they wanted to give back to their community. For years, money for the foundation has been raised through the proceeds from scholarship houses and scholarship apartments. Several members have also personally endowed scholarships that are given annually in their name. Since 1965, the TBA has awarded 483 scholarships, totally $1.85 million in Virginia Beach alone. TBA was awarded $814,400 in scholarships to 237 students. Joining us tonight from the TBA is Fred Napolitano II. Most important thing about him, he's the father of my son-in-law. And he's also a past TBA president and chair of the TBA Scholarship Foundation, along with Richard Gah, who we all know so well, and the association's former general counsel and namesake of one of the TBA's newest scholarship awards. We welcome you both here tonight, and thank you for what you're doing. A selection committee made up of the TBA members reviews the applications, looking for students who excel academically, as well as demonstrate a strong commitment to their community. I'd like to present the following $5,000 academic awards to Beavik Patel of Ocean Lakes High School, who received the Howard and Nancy Weisberg Scholarship. He plans to attend the University of Virginia and pursue a career in medicine. The next one, folks, is to David Scherer of Cox High School, who received the first Richard D. Giesh Scholarship. David plans to study math, science, and engineering at Brown University. And Richard, you make that presentation. My goodness, coming from you means so much more than me. Go ahead, counsel, if you could be seated. Just to follow up, the TBA Scholarship Foundation also conducts a young designer scholarship competition where students enter their architectural drawings to be judged by a panel of design professionals. Since the design contest was started in 1982, 113 Virginia Beach students have been winners, receiving $148,300 in scholarship money. The winning entries were submitted by Gage D'Essenzo of Lanstown High School, who won the first-place $1,500 award, and Nash Human of Lanstown High School, who won the second-place $1,200 award. Are they here? Okay. Unfortunately, the other two design contest winners couldn't join us this evening. They are Jack Troxwell of the Advanced Technology Center, who won the third-place $800 award, and Lucas Toscano of Lanstown High School, who won the $500 honorable mention. Congratulations to all of you for your achievements. And I want to say to the representatives of the TBA, thank you for what you're doing. With the cost of education today, it is just outrageous, and everything that you can do to help these young people be able to get a good education is really very much appreciated. So we applaud you as well. Thank you very much. I'm going to open a public hearing on the franchise agreements for 2701 Atlantic Avenue for 27th F and B LLC trading this Ocean 27 Cafe for Boardwalk Cafe in a Connector Park.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Modify Hertz Cove Neighborhood Dredging Project SSD.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Declare excess city property of 1428 Southern Boulevard.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Lease of city property to Dolly Family Farms LLC, 2848 Indian River Road, and 2400-2500 Tournament Drive.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Okay, you will note that we're going to go to the formal session consent agenda. And, folks, you'll see a couple of changes, but we're aware of them. There'll be two items we'll be hearing. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda. First, ordinances and resolutions. Item J1, which is ordinances to amend the CD Code, A, paragraph 5-520, 5-521, 5-524, and 5-527, rate dangerous and vicious dogs. B, paragraph 12-27, rate authority to the fire chief or other officer in charge during an emergency incident. C, paragraph 23-8, rate calling ambulance or firefighting apparatus without cause. And paragraph 23-8.3, rate reimbursement of expenses incurred in responding to emergencies. D, paragraph 35-136, paragraphs 143.1, rate meal taxes, rate off-premises consumption. E, paragraph 35-169, to provide short-term rental registry and direction to the commissioner of revenue in the collection of information from operators. F, paragraph 35-66, rate elderly and disabled tax relief application extensions. And G, add paragraph 18-108.1, rate church and nonprofit fundraising activities. J2, which is ordinance to amend the city's open-air cafe franchise regulations. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item J3, which is ordinance to grant F and B LLC franchise agreements, rate open-air cafes in the resort area, District 6 Beach, A, Connector Park Cafe, and B, Boardwalk Cafe. Madam Clerk, please note the mayor's abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
For indefinite deferrals, item J4, which is ordinance to modify the boundary of Hertz Cove Neighborhood Dredging SSD and authorize the refund of levies in Lynn Haven District. Item J5, for approval, the ordinance to declare excess city property at 1428 Southern Boulevard and authorize city manager to sell same to John W. Dobbs, District 6 Beach District. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 6 is ordinance to authorize execution of a lease of city-owned farmland with Dolly Family Farms LLC, District 7 Princess Anne, A, 2400-2500 Tournament Drive, Ball Field Farm, and B, 2848 Indian River Road School Farm. Item 7, an ordinance to appoint viewers to view each street or alleys proposed to be closed. Item 8, resolution opposing offshore oil and gas exploration, including seismic testing. And, madam clerk, please note that Councilman Moss is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 9 is resolution to amend City Council Resolution 03612 to recoup certain expenses related to special events. Item 11, ordinances to accept, appropriate, or transfer, A, $336,375 from Sheriff's Office Special Revenue Fund to their fiscal year 2016-17 operating budget, rate leave payouts. B, $150,000 to the Sheriff's Office and authorize expansion of the in-house Fresh Inmate Meals Program. C, $25,000 state funds to Human Services for opioid prevention, treatment, and recovery. D, $26,760 state funds to Human Services for gap analysis of adult outpatient same-day access. And E, $70,000 state funds to Human Services for peer support services, homeless transition.
Open a public hearing for planning?
Under planning for consent, item K1, which is, no, K2, excuse me. Item K2, which is the application of Adventure Works Inc. and KOA Inc. in the Beach District. Item 3 is the application of Ocean Bay Homes Inc. in the Beach District. And, madam clerk, please note that Mayor Sessom is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 4, which is the application of Connie L. Hebert, Connie and Anthony Hebert, for conditional use permit in the Rose Hall District. Item 5 is the application to amend paragraph 111, 203, 230, 901, and 1001 of the city zoning ordinance. And paragraph 5.2 of the Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code, rate parking requirements, conditional requirements, establishment as a conditional use in the business industrial and oceanfront resort form-based code districts of craft wineries. And item 6 is the ordinance to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan policy document for reference and identify Seapine Station, and to amend the reference handbook to add the voluntary design guidelines for Seapine Station in reference to design components. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved those items, except those noted as the abstentions from the mayor and Mr. Moss.
I will go to item number eight and recognize Mr. Moss for his abstention on offshore oil/gas exploration, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a preference, this is to item J8. The content of the resolution wasn't made available until Thursday, and it was a little bit earlier, but not in sufficient time for me to receive an official opinion from the office of general counsel for the president, who issues conflict of interest rulings formally for federal employees. But this is my letter as to why I came to that determination in the absence of being able to have time to get a formal judgment. In my 14 years of service to the public on City Council, I have rarely abstained. It is my position that state law does set the lowest standard of acceptable conflict of interest. Unlike the Commonwealth of Virginia, it's much lower standard of conflict of interest, the federal standard is one of even avoiding the appearance of conflict. The resolution on offshore drilling on City Council's June 20, 2017 agenda references the Department of Defense October 2015 response to the Department of Interior's comment on proposed offshore energy exploration in the mid-Atlantic region. As an employee of the Department of Defense, I have concluded that my participation in City Council's discussion and vote on this resolution would result in the appearance of a conflict of interest under the appearance of the conflict of interest standard. Therefore, my decision is to abstain from the agenda item referenced in the letter for the aforementioned reasons. My bias is to vote. I'm not one to avoid controversy, but my duty is to preserve the public's trust that I will uphold the highest ethical standards that takes precedence. It is the latter and higher duty that my vote of abstention upholds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I now will read what's required. I want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. All, as to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. That being said, we will now call speakers, and I will get to that item now. Resolution to direct the city manager to undertake a traffic noise evaluation along North Hampton Boulevard and report the findings to the Virginia Department of Transportation, and if needed, the Commonwealth Transportation Board shall fund the noise abatement. Call the speakers, please.
David Gressons.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is David Gressons, 5037 Regina Lane, that is in the Lake Shores Neighborhood, Bayside District, immediately adjacent to North Hampton Boulevard, which is the subject of this resolution. I'd like to open by thanking the Vice Mayor for attending and giving his personal support to this resolution and to our Civic League. Over the past three and a half years, we have experienced a significant increase in noise, ambient noise, as well as light pollution from North Hampton Boulevard due to the incremental removal of all vegetation, excuse me, vegetation in that corridor. During that time, we've worked with various city departments, and it really wasn't until the last few months, and certainly with Vice Mayor Jones's support in ending in this resolution or the next step in the process, this being this resolution, do we expect to see any relief. It is a documented fact from a federal noise survey that this area, this North Hampton corridor from Independence Boulevard to Bayside Road is the noisiest in the city of Virginia Beach. It wasn't anything that we moved into and discovered. I'm a 30-year resident. This has happened incrementally over the last three years. And for that reason, this resolution to get it started is important, but it is a start. Vice Mayor Jones, as you know, our discussions with Delegate Villanueva, Delegate Stolli, and Senator Wagner indicate Richmond is ready to go. They're ready to find the money, and they're ready to get it into the January 2018 budget introduction. So as we move forward with this noise study, this noise survey, I request that it be undertaken with all due speed, and that the analysis be done as quickly as possible to give us the best chance we have to get the construction of the wall into the January 2018 state budget.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Sir, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks for coming down.
That's all the speakers on that one, Your Honor.
Excuse me?
That's all the speakers on that one. The other two decided not to speak.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the resolution to direct the city manager...
I believe they changed their mind just a minute. You didn't check in with me. You didn't sign the...
Come forward, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. We didn't know you were here.
We welcome you tonight.
Please state your name.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you. Councilman Moss, no jokes at your expense this time. I promise.
That's okay.
All right.
Please state your name, since we didn't...
My name is Jim Brickman. I'm the president of the Lake Shore Civic League. We've got everybody from Lake Shore, put your hands up here. All right.
We welcome each and every one of you.
Brought a lot of folks down here because this is a serious problem for us. When we first started working on this, we were told by Mr. Davenport there was no money for a sound study. We were also told that because the widening of North Hampton was done with city money and no other money, there's no way to get other money to do this. Now, in talking to Delegate Stolli and his conversations with Mr. Utterback from VDOT, that secondary roads inside city limits can be maintained by the city using state money that comes from a block grant. I worked in the Pentagon for a number of years. I understand different pots of money and different colors of money, and how things can get moved around. But if the state gave the city money to maintain that, why we can't get a sound wall? Anyway, so we've been working on this. We've got this noise study from the Bureau of Transportation Statistics that I provided to Mr. Moss, Mr. Jones, everybody, Delegate Stolli, Senator Wagner, Delegate Villanueva. I've made this available. It shows that we exceed the city's noise ordinance on a regular basis in that neighborhood. We are in excess of that. Councilwoman Wilson, you grew up in Gardenwood. You know what it's like.
I did.
You know what your neighbors are experiencing right now. And this is, the problem we have here is the barriers that have been thrown up in our efforts to try and build a sound barrier. We could have built a sound barrier with those barriers. It's frustrating. But right now, you have an opportunity to get a twofer. You can get a sound barrier which protects lake shores and other residents along North Hampton's property values, which in a Dillon Rule state is gold, right? My property value drops, that does not help anyone in the city of Virginia Beach. Secondly, you can beautify that stretch of Virginia Beach and create a gateway. It's not flashing surfboards, it's not a lighthouse on top of Greenwich Road flyover, but it would certainly beautify an entrance to Virginia Beach that numerous people pass through, either coming to Virginia Beach or passing through. And that's their first impression of Virginia Beach, is that bramble and looking into my backyard. So I'm also confused as to why we need a sound study. Delegate Stolli told me he was confused as to why. As I drive down on my way here along Princess Anne, as I drive down Nimmo Parkway, Lynn Haven, where sound barriers were built, were those sound barriers built on the assumption that they were needed, or was a sound study done before taxpayer dollars were expended to build those sound barriers? And that's a pretty simple question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Is Mr. Shields here? Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion, please?
Thank you. Just a comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The reason this resolution is worded the way it is is that on the advice of the city attorney as to what the proper procedure is in order to make our request to the state legislature, so that's why it's worded the way it is.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the resolution to direct the city manager to undertake a traffic noise evaluation along North Hampton Boulevard and report findings to the Virginia Department of Transportation, and if needed, the Commonwealth Transportation Board shall fund the noise abatement, District 4 Bayside. So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. Numerous seconds. Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved or adopted the resolution.
Now, I go to item K1 in planning, Titan Investment Group. We had someone who wanted to speak, and at the okay of the Bayside representative, we're going to let the individual, Mr. Rouse, speak first, and then we will have the applicant.
Mr. Rouse, would you come forward?
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I consider it a great honor to be in your presence to speak today, voice my opinion. On May 9, I drafted a letter to the City Planning Commission, and that states my concerns. And it read as follows. "I'm very concerned about the property at 5024 Bonnie Road. This property has been adequate cared for since the previous owner died. We have been several storms, which the tree limbs and branches have fallen on my property. They have been trying to find out who owned the property. No one seemed to know. I was surprised to hear from the city that this property has been divided into two sections. All my wife, my wife called to see what could be done regarding rodents and other pests on their property. She was given the name of the owner, Titan Investment Company Incorporated. The next day, several men came over and cut the front of the grass on the property. Indirect information regarding the property is all you hear. Two years ago, a surveyor came on my property, moved cinder blocks on the front, and came over the fence in the back of the place to set boundary flags. I was not given a courtesy call or sent a letter to indicate the surveying would be done. I'm aware that the property on my side is overlapping on each other's understanding. The list the owner knew and had it indicated on his plot. Some city, some community owners had been trying to find out and meet with the new owners of the property. I have questions on, would like to be answered. When was the property divided? Who owned the second half of the property? Who is communicating with the new owner? And again, I'm against duplex dwelling on this property because it will make the area overcrowded and congested. Parking for two dwellings will be impossible in such a small place. This property should remain a one-family dwelling. Open communication with all parties is always the best to achieve a successful request. I suggested that Titan Investment Corporation and Company seek professional mediation with all owners and stop the conveying activities and indicate openly the overall plan for this property." Now, I met with Attorney Bodan out in the lobby, and he answered a lot of the questions for me. But the only thing about it is that there was no communication with Titan Investment Company. If we could have got together and we could have worked something out, I'm pretty sure. And so that was my complaint at this time.
Thank you, sir, for coming in.
Thank you.
And we'll hear from Mr. Burdon now, and anything that he assures you will be documented.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, sir. Mr. Burdon, you heard the concerns, and he said you all had made a lot of progress.
It was my pleasure to talk with Reverend Rouse and Mrs. Rouse out here, and I do apologize for the fact that the client didn't have that communication with the Rouses. We did receive their email at the Planning Commission public hearing. And we, I've assured them that, and the plans have a very heavy landscape screening along the entirety of their shared boundary. We did that, you know, for the purpose of making sure there was no impact. The dwellings meet all the zoning requirements. There's no, you know, we're not in any setbacks. In fact, we got a 30-foot setback from Bonnie Road instead of 20. So there's nothing about this application that involves changing anything in zoning. But what we are doing because of the subdivision variance that's necessary, because these lots that were created in 1960, which I did explain to the Reverend and his wife by deed rather than by plat, this variance is to allow that lot to be platted. It's been separately GPIN, separately taxed for well, far over 50 years. But the, so we've provided that buffer for them, and we've agreed that if he would like, if they would like it, we will also put up a fence on the shared boundary. And we'll also get with them to make sure that everyone is in agreement as to where the boundary between the two properties are. It seems that there's, from what his letter said, there may be some, you know, concern. But he, I don't think there is. I think everyone knows where the line is, but we will work with them and make sure that, you know, no one is upset by, you know, where the line between the properties are. But this is really a cleanup, something that was platted, excuse me, that should have been platted in 1960 when it was divided. My client acquired the property, the two properties, after they had been reassembled by a previous investor. He's owned the property for about two and a half, three years. There were owners prior to that time. The properties were separated for over a decade, and they've been re-put together, but they're separate parcels and have been for all these years, and we want to go ahead and develop it as it was divided in 1960.
Mark, everything of this state is recorded, and are we in good shape for you to add something to the agreement?
The plan is... The plan is, the plan is, I'm sorry.
The fence and everything's in there?
The only thing that's not is the fence. Everything is in the plan. If they would like a fence, we've agreed to put up a fence.
Yeah, I believe that is correct, and I was going to, I was going to say exactly that. The only thing that I don't see mentioned in condition is the fence.
Okay, well, you don't mind us adding the condition?
If the Reverend's wife would like a fence six or eight foot high on their shared property line, we'll be more than happy to put it up.
That's submitted. Mr. Moss?
I would just, Mr. Utterback, request that someone who's known to the principal of Titan just reach out and establish a personal relationship, if you would please, with the adjacent property owner.
That's absolutely the right advice, and frankly, it's been given, and we'll give it again. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the application of Titan Investment Group, Inc., for subdivision variance to paragraph 4.4B and D of the subdivision regulations, Ray duplexes at 5024 Bonnie Road and adjacent parcels, with the additional condition that a fence be, appropriate fence be erected at the shared property line.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved the application with the addition of adding an appropriate fence to be installed on the shared property.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, appointments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Personnel Board Judge Patricia West, to the Tidewater Community College, Mrs. Delsino Miles, to the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission, Jennifer Owl.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question.
I just make one correction for the record. She certainly, Ms. Patricia, was a judge, but she's not currently serving as a judge, so I don't know what the attorney may, that may have some implications for the city attorney, but I just, I understand that she deserves the honorable title, but that may be an issue for the record.
I think it's appropriately noted by your comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have made the appointments slated by the Vice Mayor.
Any unfinished business? Any new business? We'll adjourn, and y'all have a wonderful evening.